All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to begin here shortly. Today is December 16th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. I'll give you a minute to ensure your cellphones are off or on silent. Council members, ensure your microphones are turned on. Just as a reminder today, there will be no committee meetings. And we'll be rolling right into a regular legislative meeting. With that said, since there is no committee meetings, I'm encouraging anybody that wants to speak on any of the matter, sign up to speak about that matter in the citizens addressing council. Anybody? Mayor?
Does that include city employees?
Yes, sir. That's I was going to to offer that during that time too as well.
Okay, so can you sign it?
No, no. Those are city employees. All right. If everybody's ready, we're going to go ahead and get started today. Today is December 16th, 2024. It is 6:01 PM. It is a regular legislative meeting of Barburton City Council. I call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Again, please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Mr. Cheater, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, Spire. Let us go to the throne of grace. Most gracious in heaven, Father, we give you thanks. We give you the praise. We give you all the glory. Father God, we ask that you would just bless this session. Bless the men and women that are assembled here in this place. That we would, Lord, be about business that is good for the citizens of Barburton and the good of Barburton. Father God, we ask that you would bless all those that are in this place and with us getting ready to commemorate your birth. Let us always remember that you are truly the reason for the season. We ask, oh God, in the name of Jesus, that your will would ever be so done here in the city of Barburton. Blessed we shall be blessed. Kept we shall be kept. In Jesus mighty and natural's name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Cheater. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
President here.
Here.
Mr. Heidig.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Hager.
Here.
Mr. Cheater.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mrs. Beck.
Here.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Thank you. Approve all the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, December 9th, 2024 as presented. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting from Monday, December 9th, 2024.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidig's motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Heidig and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, December 9th, 2024 as presented. Are there any remarks from the body? All those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? All right. The minutes are adopted. Petitions and claims?
We have none.
Matters requested?
They will be dismissed on January 6th.
All right. Thank you for pointing that out. Citizens addressing council. Seeing no citizens move to sign in, so I'm going to open it up. I do understand that there are some employees, department heads that would like to speak. You don't have to state your name, address, but just.
So I just want to remind you guys that you'll be voting on a very important piece of legislation tonight. And I want to emphasize how important this is, that we continue our partnerships, that the Muskingham watershed, concert watershed covers over 20% of the state of Ohio and the district covers 18 counties within Ohio. And we're at the top of the watershed, so we can not only help our citizens, but we're also helping all of the watershed when we partner with agencies like this. Muskingham supports our projects and all of the communities in 18 counties. They want to support us. So I just want to emphasize that importance going forward tonight.
To continue on that, I wanted to remind everybody that we have completed three of the four necessary projects to have the largest impact with the storm mitigation in South Barburton. This project is critical because it takes 300 acres of rainwater in an area, stops that water from flowing through Elson, through the neighborhood, over to the Twin Sixties. It will dam that water with a dike, divert it south into an area the previous projects lowered the swamp area and provided the capacity to allow this water to come in, filter, and then get to a designed storm sewer to take it over to the Tusk. And again, it's it's not will it flood in the future? It will flood in the future. We've done nothing to stop that water yet from traveling through Elson. This last critical project, you know, needs to happen to get the full benefit of all four of these projects we continued to talk about. So our next steps are successful to help use outside monies. The agencies really like our projects. Our next step, I promise you, would be to do only as much engineering survey to identify the exact project limits. We generally know where it is. I think we've shown that on mapping. Our next steps would be to definitively get the exact amount of land we need. Not too much, not too little, but the exact amount. Transfer that so it is in City of Barburton control before we would ever spend another penny to complete the design and not a penny of construction monies until we own and control all the land. Thank you.
I think you hear the importance of this project, this fourth phase. It's immense, as the region being captured by the fourth phased is very large and vast. This phase helps mitigate storm water coming from the east, meaning east of Fifth Street area, coming into that area. The relationship that we've built with Muskingham watershed district was not easy. They have a small section of Barburton who are paying members of their district. It took years, years of myself, the Norton administration, our law director and others, including many roundtable discussions and meetings that started with a letter that I wrote to Governor DeWine, who we then worked with to build positive relationships with our partners. This grant and the resulting study is needed to finish the fourth phase of this large project for the south end of town. This study is also needed in order to have any type of construction occur. Since Muskingham has been receiving funds from Barburton property owners over the years, isn't it time that the community receives some of this funding back to help mitigate storm water? These grants are not available all the time. The comment was made last week by council that these grant dollars are already allocated and are going somewhere. Let's get them here in Barburton. And I agree with that comment. Question for council. Would you give a dollar to get $3 back guaranteed? This ordinance and resulting grant will provide the city $3 for every dollar that we spend to take that next step into mitigating flooding, the fourth phase of the project. This has nothing to do with the Truson Farm development. This is east of that, or excuse me, west of that, and they drain in different areas. Going back to the grant, the vast majority of grants have a local component, meaning grants are not funded 100% in some cases. In all infrastructure projects like this, there must be design work completed before the construction. In this case, the split is 75-25, local. Again, funds have been paid into the Muskingham watershed for years by our citizens, our taxpayers. Shouldn't the community receive some type of benefit? Thank you.
Since the mayor brought up Truson Farm, I just want to touch on this a little bit. I think the grant opportunity for the Muskingham watershed, that partnership, is a really good opportunity for the city of Barburton. And whether or not the Truson Farm develops, which we'll find out Wednesday at Planning Commission, this this grant, these grant dollars really would be impactful to the south side of Barburton regardless. If Truson is developed, they would have to have their own water retention and they'd have to follow all their own regulations. But again, regardless if it passes or it fails, this is a great grant opportunity for the city of Barburton. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more department heads that would like to say anything? We're going to hop into first reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number 120 dash 2024, presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title, appropriation utilities department. An ordinance appropriating $1,162,159 from the unappropriated item of the water plant construction fund to the capital budget of the water plant construction fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 120 dash 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to adopt ordinance number 120 dash 2024. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 121 dash 2024, presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title, 2025 temporary budget. An ordinance adopting a temporary budget for operating expenses for the city for the period beginning January 1st, 2025 and providing for the administration thereof and declaring it an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 121 dash 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to adopt ordinance number 121 dash 2024. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 122 dash 2024, presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title, year-end appropriations amendments. An ordinance modifying appropriations with certain funds in order to cover expenditures to the end of the fiscal year and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 122 dash 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to adopt ordinance number 122 dash 2024. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 123 dash 2024, presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title, 2025 street capital improvement budget. An ordinance adopting a budget for the street capital improvements fund for the period beginning January 1st, 2025 and providing for the administration thereof and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 123 dash 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Heidig to adopt ordinance number 123 dash 2024. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 124 dash 2024. Presented by Mr. Griffin. Title, entering into contract Muskingham watershed conservancy district partners in watershed management. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into contract with Muskingham watershed conservancy district partners in watershed management to fund opportunities, including but not limited to additional engineering, design, and development acquisition, donation documents to further define the area needed for the South Barburton stream creation and wetland restoration and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Griffin's motion on suspension.
A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Hager to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barburton City Charter. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Cheater.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 124 dash 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mr. Griffin's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Hager to adopt ordinance number 124 dash 2024. Are there any remarks from the body? Mrs. Gerhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to thank Mr. Tiaducki and Ms. Crawford for all the work that you've put into this and coming in and getting non-engineers and people who probably don't exactly understand wetlands to understand what this project is and the need that we have for it in South Barburton. And Mayor, for your letter reaching out to get the support for this. And Mrs. Carr, for your support in explaining it. I definitely think that, you know, a lot has been done and I want to see this carried out. I still have some reservations and concerns. Currently, the letters that we have on file were for the H2 Ohio, not the Muskingham. So defining this, it's still the wrong letter to get the property. And I would really hate to see the landowner have the ability to back out because of that error. I know we oftentimes have sat here and talked about things that just haven't seemed to be done the right way the first time as far as maybe the size of a city building or needing more twin sixes or even the comment last week that Mr. Cheater's new neighborhood he's moving to shouldn't have been built. So I don't want to rush into something and it not be right for the city and for us spending money. So I wish that we could get all the Ts crossed and Is dotted, eliminate some of the concern and hesitation, not have to do this with an emergency, and definitely make sure step four happens for word three. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerhardt. Is there anything else from the body? Mr. Griffin?
Yes, President. Let's go one thing. Nobody is. I think I'm the oldest person in this room. That's the flooding when I was going to grade school, eighth grade, whatever, you know. And I had to be carried from my property to the next street by the neighbor who had hip hoops on me. This was before Doug Weintraub was born. This was before most people in this, I think everybody in here was born. It has nothing to do with Truson Farm. That was flooding then. And we don't do something, no, all administrations before that, nobody saw a need into going for this. But now the study's been done. We found out that the water can go to the Tusk through that way and got all the wetlands back there in Lake. They could absorb millions of gallons of water. And it would still go under Eastern Road into the Tusk. Am I correct, Mr. Taylor? So really, you can take the Truson Farms off the table. All you need is permission to go to water and it would be done for us. So I'm asking everybody in here that's a part to be voted on because we've been driven under the bus too many years. Other than administrations that admitted, they didn't even know there was a flooding problem out there. But anyway, I'm glad for this administration and the fact that we started several years ago with the flood committees and we've been working on this ever since. And finally, we've got some action. We've got the Twin Cities, uh, Twin Sixties with the one-way check valves and everything. So this is just the fourth part of the puzzle and we need this to complete the project. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mrs. Hager?
Um, I want to back up what Councilman Gerhardt said. We're, it's not even about Truson Farm. We can take Truson Farms off the table. It's making sure that we've got every T and every cross and every I dotted the right way. We still, and this is something that concerns me, is we still do not have an official legal document from the land owner stating that he will donate this land. And, you know, we can, and it's like, okay, we can go through this process and if he then suddenly pulls out and says, oh, I don't want to do it, then we back out and we try and figure out what we're going to do again. But that's time and money and effort that, you know, why aren't we making sure we have a legal document from this man stating that, you know, we have a general idea of how much land we're going to need? So say, you know, this is, you know, what you generally think we're going to need. Are you willing to donate up to this point and get it in a legal, legally binding document? So we know when the time comes, we have that land. Right now, we don't know that we have that land because we've, we've got a letter with a signature on it and that's it. That's not going to hold up in court as a legal, I mean. Lisa, would that, just a signed paper saying, yeah, I'll give you this land, would that hold up in court?
Well, I, I can't opine to that specific document. What I can say is typically an agreement is.
Okay, so that would?
I, I don't know. I'm not familiar. I don't, I don't know who, what court we would be in.
Yeah.
And I don't really.
Yeah, but it's the fact that still, I mean, it could be up in the air. Instead of having a legally binding document that says he will donate this land, then we know for sure where we're at and we can move forward knowing full well. Okay, we can move forward. forward. So that's where I'm at.
Are there any remarks from the body? Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like everybody to remember that charitable acts do not absolve responsibility. We have known the elevations of this entire property for how long? And suddenly, now that it's in a private person's hands, we want to come in and suddenly do the work? What happened when the BCDC owned it? What happened when we got grants over 10 years ago for an industrial park that showed maps of that? What happened to all of that? What happened to an investment of $40 million to build all these houses that hasn't been moved on in two years while other neighborhoods have been put up? It's been said in here that the South Side's being thrown under the bus. We are being thrown under the bus by subsidizing private responsibility. If the Conservancy District is that gung-ho about it, then the property owner should be entering the contract with them, not the city. It was said that for every dollar the city invests, we would get $3 back. Very true. How much money has the people that have lived in that district already paid? So we are to subsidize the rest of the project with the rest of the state's money after people that live in that district have been paying for how long? Just remember, charity does have drawbacks. Donating land to us is going to put the expense on the rest of the city for, on top of what the people that live in the district already paid. And we don't even know if this property needs that or not to mitigate water. We have an old plan that expired, but that old plan also had a complex this damn long of 150 rental units, and now it's chopped into houses. I haven't seen it, even if it's been submitted. But at the same time, it just seems out of place that after so long... Mayor, you were a councilman during the time that the industrial park grant came in. Things were studied then. The BCDC owned the property for what, a decade? Nobody cared? Nobody looked? It was in private hands then? What's the difference now? Doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Sir, is that a question to me? That's rhetorical.
That you were a council during that?
No, I can give you the background with the EDA funds to BCDC.
That's...
This is for remarks.
The presiding officer here.
It's for remarks only. Mr. Harris?
I just want to say one thing. Do I agree this needs done? Yes. But when asked, can you send us the letters that say he will donate or what have you, the land? In the two letters I received, one says long-term maintenance easement agreement. The other one says construction acquisition agreement. I'm not a lawyer. I did work with the law for quite some time with Mr. Tiedem. It's not a contract. I mean, I could tell you this all day long and once everything's done, say, oh, thanks, appreciate your help. It's not a contract. Okay? It doesn't hold him to anything. I just think we need to take a hard look at what we're doing here instead of just jumping. I mean, it definitely needs done. I've lived, you know, when I was a police officer, yeah, flooded. Has it flooded down there recently? Not that I'm aware of. I went down there after August 8th. Looked dry to me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there any remarks from the body? Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to agree with Mr. Heidig, Mr. Harris, Ms. Gerhart, Ms. Hager. My opinion hasn't changed since the last time this was presented to us, and I do have concerns about, I know as much as we say this has nothing to do with Trusson Farms, the owner of Trusson Farms owns part of this property, so it does, you know, affect that. And as far as his letter of intent, he also intended on having homes where you could bring your own builder, and that quickly changed. So, you know, that's where I'm at with it. That's all.
All right. Is there anything else from any person on the body? All right. Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Thompson?
No.
Ms. Gerhart?
No.
Mr. Heidig?
No.
Mr. Tiedem?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
No.
Motion for adoption fails for ordinance 124 dash 2024.
Ordinance number 125 dash 2024 presented by Mr. Griffin and Mrs. Thompson. Title: Appropriation Utilities Department. An ordinance authorizing the approval of contingency funds in the amount of $272,346 to be appropriated from the unappropriated item of the city grant fund to the capital budget of the city grant fund and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule is required by Section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Please.
Thank you. And Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Griffin's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedem?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 124 dash 20, 125 dash 2024.
Thank you. And Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Griffin's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 125 dash 2024. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedem?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Descends the first reading.
Second reading of ordinances and resolutions?
We have none.
Third reading of ordinances and resolutions?
We have none.
Appointments?
We have none.
Mislenish and unfinished business. Anything from the body? One last time, I guess I'll mention, thank you, Mr. Tiedem, for everything you've done for City Council since you've been here. Thank you for everything you've done for the city, pretty much your entire life, the sacrifices you've made and your family have made. And I'm sure that's going to continue. And you're not going away. So with that, this is the last council meeting of the year. Our, I'm sorry. All right. Our next meeting back will be January 6th of 2025, where all committees will be meeting that evening, and then we'll do the committee at the hall, and then start our regular schedule for Barben City Council. Is there anything from Department head? Communication from the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. In terms of ordinance 124 of 2024, what happens when all the Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, but there's no grants available to apply for? It falls 100% on taxpayers. And when it comes to EDA funds, BCDC did acquire EDA funds to put an industrial park at the Trusson Farm area, which did not include the parcel that we were discussing tonight. There was a timeframe to use the EDA funds. The BCDC brought in a consultant to look at wetlands, to look at the placement of roads, the depth of the road, the soil borings, the amount of earth that would have to be moved for a house versus a large industrial building, and they ran out of time. So they had to give the money back. That's what happened with that. It sat there. We had some purchasers come in with some grand plans. We met with Ohio Edison on some substations. It included investors from New Jersey, Atlanta, the University of Akron, and it fell through. So that's kind of the history. I know we looked at the Trusson Farm area for a cemetery, for housing before, and no one was interested in it. We looked at it for a par three golf course. This is all through BCDC. So it's been looked at for a multitude of things. This is the first real group that was interested in the Trusson Farm part, again, separate from what we are discussing tonight. The two holes of water, remember? So we'll see if there's any, when the Is are dotted, Ts are crossed, if there's any grants available. I am happy to announce that, you know, found, City Council did approve and back us. The administration, the Cox Powell Herald Building did receive $1.9 million in historic tax credits. This was approved by Governor DeWine's office, we heard last week, late last week. The estimate on this project is $11.6 million. If you recall, we had the developer come in, very interested, a different price tag than, for the council members that were here before, a different price tag than the development that was going to go in before, which was $4 to $6 million, somewhere around there. So great news, $1.9 million in historic tax credits just approved last week. I believe 37 projects were funded throughout the state. I believe only one other in Summit County, which is the YWCA in downtown Akron. So this is great news for us and our downtown. What I gave council was a review of grant funds either awarded to the city or partners that we worked with in 2024, or grants that we had received or in, or are in place and being used as we speak. So you'll see State Street and Worcester Road North wasn't funded, granted, or awarded this year, but it's been in place and finished up this year. So not all of these grants are coming to the city. The $1.9 million historic tax credit is in this, but that's a huge development for downtown. Not the $11.6 million because that's just an estimate. These aren't guaranteed, any type of grant that we apply for. Nothing's guaranteed. They are competitive. And they are funds allocated for the betterment of the community. These funds are going to other communities, as we've said about grants. My administration has been very diligent and meticulous in searching, applying for, and maximizing grants. As provided to you the dollar amount of grants either awarded this year or are in active construction projects or programs for 2024 is over $31.5 million. The amount of grants awarded this year is over $8.5 million. So they're not in use yet, or may not be in use yet, but they are, they were awarded this year. We'll continue searching for better ways, or excuse me, ways to better the community and saving taxpayer money on these important projects and programs. So if you have any questions on anything individually, please let me know. Again, we're continuing our collection of non-parish pools and toiletries for the months of December and January for Barben Salvation Army in Bethlehem. Many of the shops downtown are participating as well, so there's a multitude of drop-off locations. I do want to thank everyone who attended the Community Engagement Capital Improvement Night with the Public last week. I appreciate the feedback and the discussions that we had. A report will be put together with the information that we collected and distributed. As we recap 2024 and look to 2025, there is a lot to be proud of, a lot that we have accomplished throughout the year, a lot that's transferring over into next year. And we're continuing to work on plans for '25 and beyond as we welcome a new member of City Council. With that, Councilman Tiedem, I want to thank you professionally and personally for your time, your energy, your feedback, your passion. Could go on for all, for a long time, but basically just your love for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's all I have for tonight.
Real quick, just looking at your list here that you provided us, I'm seeing $1.9 million awarded for the Worcester Road North Roundabout.
Uh huh. So that was awarded. Council took no action. So, but it was awarded.
Okay. You said these were like active projects?
No, I said they were awarded or active projects. Awarded this year, or they are active projects.
Okay. Just so you know if there were any surprises.
Nope. That's why there's checks and balances. Yes?
I know you mentioned that the project was $11.6 and he got $1.9. Will he be moving forward, or did he need more tax credit to justify?
It's my understanding that he'll move forward.
Okay. And then what is, when we call it a tax credit, does that mean he gets $1.9 million off his taxes to do the project, or it's like a funding?
Off the top of my head, I don't have all the specifics on how that program works. But he's been very successful with using historic tax credits, and it's been a great project or program that the state's instituted for several years now. I forget how long it's been around. But I can get you the specifics on how that calculation works, but I don't have that with me.
Okay. I have three things total. Number two, I had to stop at the post office today, and I'm not positive that that one-way is working too well with the current signage because I had to wait for a car coming the wrong way to turn onto it, then had to wait to leave the post office for a car going the wrong way. And then I got to trying to go left in front of like Eminem in Block 7, and a woman, I'm trying to go left on a tusk, and this woman not paying attention came within inches of turning right into me because she's trying to go right into the one-way. I don't know if we want to look at some more signs over there. I just thought it was unusual in my 10-minute post office run to witness three occurrences.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. It's, it's one of those things that you can put things in blinking lights and people sometimes don't see it.
I know.
But yeah, we'll take a look at that.
We could probably put a person there motioning and we'd still miss it. I just didn't know if maybe some sign is up, like when you're looking, just because it's kind of more this way versus this way. I'm sure it would help if I had directions for you, but I know what I'm thinking.
No, I know what you mean.
And then the last thing, I just wanted to thank you for looking at getting the Is dotted and Ts crossed because I do think it'll make everybody feel more confident in projects moving forward and...
So you want us to move forward with this project? To get Ts crossed and Is dotted?
Well, we didn't have the Is dotted and Ts crossed, and that's why I think there was some hesitancy. So I'm just saying, you said you would be doing that in the future, and I just think that's what's going to help build.
Well, we may disagree on what was crossed and what was dotted, but I'd love to sit down and talk to you about that. And that's why I was hoping we could talk a little further about clearing up some misconceptions. Because I don't think that anything that we've said maybe changed anyone's mind, that the misconceptions kind of prove to continue versus questions being asked and follow-through. But I'd love to sit down with you and go over that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes? Mayor, on this grant for order being used sheet that you gave us, I noticed a million-dollar grant that we got for Lake Anna. Any updates on that? I mean...
No. I don't believe the physical money has come here yet, but we've got a, we've had a bunch of community meetings, stakeholder meetings for, I believe, over a year. So continuing to meet and go over things.
Do we have any idea when we might look at some more of that, like implementing stuff?
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's a meeting scheduled yet for the coming months or not. But the last meeting we had kind of talked about what the stakeholders wanted, and what they wanted was turned into, I'm just going to kind of make up the numbers, about $11 million, right? And then you start paring that down, you know, do we need, the talk was, hey, we already have a lot of facilities that hold 25 people, 50 people, 75 people. We want something that holds 300. But if you have a footprint like this, something much bigger, and you've taken up that whole corner of the lake, is that what everyone wants? And how do you raise that type of funds? So everyone looked at that and kind of, okay, maybe we can pare it down quite a bit. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Yes?
With the Cox Powell Building getting close to $2 million, will they be asking for the half a million we have locked up to be dispersed to them soon in legislation from the previous developers?
I'm not sure what they may ask for. I think the thought was they would not ask for anything more than what was approved last time. If you recall, last time, the city was safeguarded with the timing of that. 70, 80% had to be completed before, something of that nature. So I can't say what they were going to ask for. But we'll have those discussions, and then I'm sure be back in touch with Council soon. Because I'm not sure of the timeframe to use those tax credits either.
Thank you?
No.
So I Google because I do not understand historic tax credit. So I would tell you that on thestateofohiodevelopment.ohio.gov, there's a long explanation of it, and then I don't know what this stands for, but the dam dot assets dot ohio dot gov talks about as well. But the quick answer, it says, "The tax credit program provides a refund of the $3 million if sufficient applicable Ohio tax liability does not exist to claim an awarded tax credit. The tax credit program is performance-based. Developers cannot be issued the credit until construction is completed and all requirements are verified." But that website has tons of FAQs on it. I don't know a lot about it. It's taxed. That's really Jeremy should be up here explaining this, but he's not, so.
Not to take anything away from Jeremy, but I believe this is the first historic tax credit project in Barben. So it's a learning curve for many of us.
Yeah, I would just encourage you to go there because it clearly has a lot of people have a lot of questions and maybe it would help you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor, typically, this is where we would adjourn, however the fun is not done. For everybody in the gallery, I did call for an executive session after, at the end of our regular legislative meeting today. So we will jump into that, but want to let everybody know that is here, that there is no business after the executive session. So there's no, if you wanted to stay, you can, the CS vote to adjourn, but there is no official business after executive session. So with that said, a request was made by myself, President of Barben City Council, to enter into an executive session that considers matters to be kept confidential. Having stated the request and submitted, I will undertake a motion to enter the executive session of council. Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to enter into executive session.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidig's motion to enter into executive session.
Thank you. It was moved by Mr. Heidig and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to enter into executive session to consider matters to be kept confidential. Clerk, please call the rolls.
President Griff?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedem?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
All right. We're now in executive session at 6:48 PM.